For the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware, in case of an emergency, the fire exit, which is to the left of this room, in the event of emergency, please move in a calm manner. Please take the stairs and do not take the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record. When you come to the podium, please identify yourself with your name and your address and speak into the microphone. We'll follow the items on the agenda. There is only one item on the agenda tonight. Planning board members will have an opportunity to, I'm sorry, the applicant will please come to the podium, state their case, and then the board will have a chance to ask questions of the applicant. Then this is a public hearing, correct? We'll be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this matter may come to the podium, state their name and address, and please direct your questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any of those questions. And then once we're complete with that, the board will deliberate and we'll let you know next steps. With that, will you please call the first case?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item and only item on our agenda is case number PB 1804-4. Upon the metta request by Fennity Associates acting as agent for Giuseppe's Restaurant and Pizzeria for preliminary final site plan approval to construct a plus or minus 150 square foot addition and to complete site-related improvements to operate a restaurant on premises 4605 and 4615 Culver Road in a C business district.
Good evening. I'm Lawrence Fennity, Fennity Associates Architects, 129 South Union Street, Spencerport, New York, and representing Giuseppe's for this request tonight. We sent electronic copies of the revised site plan based on our discussions at the workshop. I have hard copy if anybody would prefer that, if they didn't get an electric, you know, get a chance to look at it.
Those are larger, so if you'd like to just hand them off to... Thank you.
It's often easier to see, though, you're right. I also have one here because I have a bad case of architect's disease. It's hard for me to talk without pointing at things. There you go. Very exciting. Try not to break into song. Just to refresh everybody, I know that we went through this at the workshop, but just to refresh real quickly without taking too much time, then we'll talk about the changes we made and then address any questions. Giuseppe's Restaurant was founded back in 1927. I didn't realize it was quite that long ago. It's been in the family ever since and Joe's running, Joe Chanapi's running it now, and his son Marcy's in the process of taking it over in the, over the next few years, and his other son's taking over the bakery end of it. So it's something that's been around for a long time. It's kind of an institution over in Gates. What they'd like to do here is move into this existing rather small property. Their other one is a full-service restaurant and bakery and pizzeria, and be able to provide a smaller Italian menu, pizza, and some of the other specialties that they bring over from their other restaurant, and provide that to all the folks that did throng to the lake shore and to the Seabreeze area, especially in the summer, but the rest of the year because it's, you know, one of the nicer places in Rochester to be. It's a very small existing building. The only change we're making to it, other than dressing it up, is in order to be able to cook much of anything in the back, we're adding eight feet to the rear of the building. And as we discussed before, adding that eight feet to the rear of the building meant we had to push the drive lane to the rear a bit in order to get around there. But the existing kitchen portion of the restaurant was absolutely tiny, and so it was very difficult for them to do much of anything in it. So this is actually the smallest we were able to do and make it possible for them to produce the menu. So, again, the site is very well, very much built out already. The paved area where the parking lot is will remain the paved area where the parking lot is. We're able to get only nine spaces on there with handicapped accessibility for one space. And then in order to make the drive aisle to the rear, which is the west side, we're having to cut back some of what was already built in the rear as the deck area for outside. So we're reducing that space a little bit. And in order to try to make up for that, they're planning on taking down the small building, which I guess was originally a clock shop or a watch shop, or its last use was a watch shop or a clock shop, and make a small outside eating space there as well. Now, as to the, that's just kind of a general run-through of what we originally were talking about on the site. And now I'd like to just address some of the changes that we've made and some of the issues that were raised at the workshop. If I miss any, please let me know. Hopefully this one worked. Oh, this does work well. All right. Changes that we looked at making, well, that exit drive that we talked about now has, you know, signs saying one way only as you're coming from Lynn Drive, so that people will not hopefully come in that way. It also will have pavement marking on it in order to keep that so that it's noted as just for exit. In the front area, we have removed the existing tables and chairs that are there. We weren't intending on using them before, but in their place, what we're doing now is we're putting some planters and also a bike rack for those folks that are traveling by bicycle down to this area and can get in there and have some place to put their bikes when they come. Along Culver Road, we're removing the pipe fence or the, in between the bollards, there's a piece of four-inch pipe that goes along there that's painted, I think, blue right now. And that whole thing is being removed. And we're lining up the walkway that one can take to get to the outside eating space over here by taking and striping out the pavement on the east side, right behind the parking, or right behind, I'm sorry, the sidewalk as well, to try to create an enlarged pathway to the area over here for outside eating. We've also opened up a second means to get into this outside eating area that ties right into that. We've shown a detail here of the fence that goes around that area. Again, the fence is there predominantly because of the requirements of the State Liquor Board. Let's see, what other changes were there? We've noted a little bit about the location of lighting fixtures. They're all small LEDs. I spent some time out there. One evening, there is a tremendous amount of light that spills onto this site already. There's a, right at the corner here in front of the clock shop area, there is a streetlight, and right here at the corner of Lynn, there's also a streetlight and quite a bit of light coming across from the parking lot and the turnaround for the buses. So honestly, one could make a case for not having to light this at all very much. So what we're trying to do is have some low lighting that would be on the building here, just some small LED-type fixtures there and here and here. And then the one area where we felt the need from looking at it that we had to have some area lighting for traffic safety was right behind the building here, so we're taking a LED spot, and it'll be elevated just above the fence a little bit, and it'll shoot away from the neighbor so that we don't, you know, throw any light towards the neighbor in that location. Again, it's very low watt. It's about 20 watts.
For the edification of the other board members, the large print that he handed out does not show that. I don't know if yours do and mine does not.
The new post mounted?
The small one does, but the large one does not.
I see him on the large one.
Do you have him on the large one? I do not.
Here, it says new post-mounted light. If you look on that.
Oh, yeah, yours is different than mine. I'm sorry.
Take this one back. Do we have an extra one for him? I apologize. We must have gotten a bad one, an old one mixed in with a new one. I apologize for that.
It's okay. We all have duds. Thank you. Sorry.
We're picking on Michael there. I apologize.
Well, that threw him right off, so.
Wow, yeah.
Guess we can ask a question.
Way to derail, Mike.
He knew which one to give to him.
All right. Trying to think of if there's too much else that we had talked about that we changed to try to respond to the good ideas that came out of the workshop session with the board. Really, other than that, very little else. At the owner's request at this point, this doesn't really matter to site plan, but just because it's shown differently on the drawing, we are still showing the northern wall of the addition as masonry, but the other two walls are going to be frame construction because when I made it a masonry wall, he lost that much more of his kitchen space. And so by going to a thinner construction, we're fine there. And in terms of building code, we're okay with that. And we'll make sure the fire marshal's happy with it as well.
So there's some variances, I think you mentioned.
Yes, there's variances that are, we're obviously on the north side, which is our front side because of the way that the lot is oriented. We're at a zero situation, and we're supposed to be, I believe, at 60 feet. At the side, we're supposed to be at 25, and we're at 16. We have an impervious coverage, which is supposed to be 80% max under the existing way this site is right now. It's 91%. We're reducing that down to about 88%. The site's pretty much all paved, so it's kind of hard to get away from that one. And the parking, the other variances for nine spaces instead of the 10 that were required by code for the occupancy of 30 within the building.
I'm sorry. Did you want to add something, Carrie?
I was just going to mention to the board that they're on the agenda for the zoning board for the May 5th meeting. The first, the May, the May meeting. I'm referencing the wrong date probably, but it's May 7th.
At the workshop, we talked about employee parking. You were going to look for alternatives?
We are still trying to investigate that. We're hoping to make an agreement with someone nearby who has parking to allow for that. The owner is, this is something he's been trying to do as well because obviously he doesn't want his employees coming in and stealing all his parking spaces. So we have to have some place for them to park. We're hopefully, I mean, again, hopefully by the zoning meeting, we'll have that worked out. He's in touch with some of the neighbors and trying to see what he can do to make an agreement there. Otherwise, we'll work out some other logistic thing where they, we bring them in from, park them someplace else and they share rides or something. Just not in order necessarily to just please you guys, which is a good idea, but predominantly because they need the parking for the customers when they come.
Does anybody else on the board have any questions?
Oh, we got some.
Go ahead, Ellen, if you want to start.
Oh, all right. I was just over there. There's a support wall on the Lynn side of the fence at this moment. I don't know that it's support or not. That's why I'm asking the question. It faces, if I were standing on Lynn looking south, there's a wall that's a piece of that fence. What's happening with that?
Is it right at the north end of the fence?
Yes.
Yes. We're going to have to reinforce there. We have a little bit of room, but we're, yes, we realize, I don't know whether that was just for reinforcing the wall or whether it was there because they had activities going on in here. There was some, when they were originally planning on doing this, they were cooking in this area or something, so I don't know exactly what the wall is for. But we are going to stabilize the end of that fence because obviously it's a long fence and you don't want it, you know, wobbling. So we will probably end up with a bit of a pie laster coming back in, but we've got a foot or so in there that we can do that with.
And does that driving lane go from the existing or the proposed extension all the way over to the fence? How wide is that driving lane?
The driving lane is 14 feet, and at that point, we have 16 feet to the property line. So it goes almost to the fence, but it stops about a foot and a little bit more, 14 inches, 16 inches from the fence.
And what is going to be in the one-foot buffer, six-inch buffer on either side? I don't know, however, where you guys are going to do that. Is this going to be more concrete or?
Right now, I believe, I haven't been able to get under that part yet because there's a deck over the top of that right now, and we're removing the deck. Under most of the deck, there's actually some concrete. So I don't know how far the concrete goes over. So if the concrete's there, obviously, we'd probably leave the concrete. If we've got a foot and a half of something, we'd probably put ground cover or something in its place because we don't really need to pave anymore of this site.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, you don't want something that's going to be maintained all the time. Can you explain to me the snow storage that I'm looking at here?
We're showing, well, actually, we have one label on there that we were supposed to remove, but we're showing.
There's one in front of a door is what I'm looking at. Isn't that the egress from the kitchen?
Right. Obviously, that's going to have to be carefully done. One of the things that we're counting on, the fact, is that our outdoor eating spaces, you know, we can work snow around some of these spaces because they're not going to be used in the winter. But yes, we're going to have to be very careful how we store snow in this area. We're just trying to find some places to keep it so that we can get it, you know.
Well, can we see a plan that actually reflects what's going on then? I mean, I don't, I'm not crazy about approving a plan that says, yeah, I'm going to store it in front of a door.
Right. No, I.
My guess is the fire marshal doesn't, wouldn't care for that.
Yeah, he probably wouldn't like that either. You're right.
So can you explain to me what we're going to do with that, the snow storage? It's also right on Culver Road.
Yeah, the one up against Culver Road, that should have been removed. I'm sorry. There was a label that was intended to be removed when we took the bollards out of there. Because we couldn't plow up against there, we'd end up storing snow up on the sidewalk, and that's not really very kosher. We're going to have to come up with a way to store snow. One of the problems we have is we'd like to be able to use areas along here to store snow, but we'd also like to landscape it, and that's where we're fighting with ourselves on that. So, you know, I'm guessing we're going to end up storing in this area and in this area and a little bit there.
I'm sorry. Can you point to those areas again?
I'm guessing we can, if you look at the blow-up in here, we should be able to store down in here some. And obviously, we can store up in here, but we can only get so much in there. And then we start running into problems of being able to store it on site.
Yeah, from what I'm seeing, I think it is a problem existing. On the new area that you guys are building for seating outdoors?
Yes.
Is that ADA compliant?
It should be, yes. It's all, there's no gate to it. It's an open.
How do you get to it? It's a raised surface at this point.
Oh, in here? Oh, you mean up here or here?
Down, down below.
This is just going to be, this will be essentially patio height. It'll be just above grade, so.
So the grade will be the same from the parking lot to the, you're going to lower that?
Yeah. Well, right now, there's a building there.
Yeah, I understand that, but also the surface is up higher.
Yeah, the intent is when we take the building down, the foundation down, et cetera, that we end up with an area that is probably just a little bit higher than the pavement because we don't, obviously, don't want the pavement to drain to it. But so we end up being able to ramp up to it just with our sidewalk or area that goes to it.
And are you going to need a retention wall between that and the parking lot that's further south?
When we looked at the grades that we saw there, our feeling wasn't that we had to, but I certainly will address that again and make sure.
Do we have a grading?
No, we don't, just because of the fact that our, the vast majority of the site, we're not changing any grades on at all, and.
It seems to me that that's up higher. I know that that ice cream building definitely is a lot higher because you guys have a.
The ice cream building is up quite a bit higher because it's at the deck height back here. My feeling was that this, the clock shop was much closer to the sidewalk height. It's just up a little bit from the sidewalk height. I think there's a step at the front door, but I don't believe there's any, you know, a bunch of stairs or anything coming from the sidewalk in front.
All right. I just remember it being a little bit higher.
It's a good thing for us to look at, yes.
All right. The, on the plan that you're showing me of the interior of the dining room and restaurant, my understanding from the workshop was that the trash was being stored inside?
Yes.
Do we know where that's going to be? I mean, I don't see it on the plan that I'm looking at.
Well, I mean, there would, obviously, there would be small trash receptacles within the dining area, which would then go to a bigger trash receptacle, which would be held in the kitchen area. Honestly, the layout of the kitchen area is not totally finalized yet, but we're going to have to plan for it, just like we have to plan for all the other pieces in the kitchen.
And the county health department has a provision for that?
We've done it in restaurants before, yes.
Okay. And the schedule for the pickups then going to be pretty regular?
Yes.
All right.
Again, that's something that would probably have to be adjusted, but typically, when we've stored it inside, it's like at least twice a week. Now, that may change in summer more, perhaps in the winter less.
Okay. And then the pole heights that you're showing on these new mall, our new wall-mounted lights, what are the size of those?
Okay, the, these two, and again, I'm pointing to the two that are in the southwest corner, are actually mounted on the building, and they're meant predominantly just to light the seating areas nearby.
Right.
Okay, so they're going to be, you know, all of eight feet above ground because I can't get higher than that. The one along, the rear here is actually mounted on the fence, so it's about six or five and a half feet above the deck height. And again, its only intention is to provide a bit of ambient lighting to the seating area there. And then the only one that'll be taller will be 12 or 13 feet on a post. I'm guessing 12 or 13 feet. That's based on the numbers I've seen. On a post, it's tied to the fence along the west side here. And it faces, the two floods face towards the parking lot away from the neighbor because we wanted to make sure we had illumination for this drive aisle through here. The rest of the site is very well lit, and the outside eating areas, we're not terribly concerned about lighting except for the last hour or so of the day during the summer because in the winter, they probably wouldn't be used.
And then, so you anticipate usage of this driveway in the evening?
Yes, I mean.
That's why you're lighting it, I would say.
Trying to light it so that people can safely get out of there at 9:00 o'clock at night or something. Or if it's in winter, when it becomes dark at 5:00, that they can get out of there safely.
Okay.
Because in this case, that's the one area where the building actually blocks all the, there's a whole lot of light along Culver, and this building actually shades that area, and I didn't want to create a dark alley back there, either from a safety point of view or from a driving point of view.
The end of the deck, what is that going to look like to me when I look at it?
We're going to take the, it'll.
I'm talking about the north end, where you guys are removing.
Right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going to take the same railing that we've taken off of here, and we'll return it back. So we'll finish it just the same as we finish, as it's presently finished along the east side.
Okay.
And we'll repair it as well because some of that's been damaged.
And then what's happening with what is currently labeled as an ice cream stand? What is that building going to be used for?
This building down here in the corner? Yeah. The original, the intent at this point is to use it as a place to have beverages for folks that are eating outside, for servers to use to pick up stuff, so there'd be trash receptacle in there as well. It's basically used in support of these areas, but it's not, we're not cooking in there. We're not serving anything out of there at this point. There's no intention to do that.
So there will be no revenue generating activity from that?
This is a, you know, they're doing all of the pickup for food inside the building.
Okay, it would just, the thing is, that going to be an ice cream operation as it currently is?
I understand. No, there was no, there's no intent to do that, and honestly, if the building was smaller, we'd probably be happier, but, you know.
I, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just have, I have one. The seating area, the new seating area, the kind of patio seating area there?
Yes.
I think we maybe asked this question at workshop, and I don't remember exactly what the answer was. What's going to go on with refuse in that area? Will there be trash cans?
Yeah, there'll be trash cans, and whether they're freestanding or somehow the building we were just discussing, the ice cream store is right next door to that. So we could either build it into that or just have some freestanding receptacles there. But this will, the freestanding building that's here will also give us another place to store some of the refuse. And again, I can't tell you how much will go on that way because we're, I haven't been in that building yet. I really don't know what's there, quite honestly.
All right. I think that actually might be a good solution to the trash issue, too, if they use some of that for refuse over there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Fennity, is it your last, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, I just was curious, is there going to be any striping on the parking lot that helps people direct them as far as that one lane behind the building? Is there going to be an arrow in the ground or?
Yeah, there's, you mean, to go out this way?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if that was.
Yeah, this arrow here is to be put right on the pavement.
And the same on the other ones for the?
Oh, that, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, we're happy to do that. I don't know. That's kind of.
I'm just asking what your plans were.
Okay, yeah. Our thought is to definitely show this one, and, you know, it makes sense if we're doing the one that says "out" that we'd show both in and out the other way so we don't have anybody feeling that that's the only way they can go. There's no reason to put that kind of stress on Lynn.
I have some questions about the striping as well. So I like how we moved the parking spots back and created a, widened this access area along the sidewalk. The only thing that sticks out to me is that we're directing patrons to leave the restaurant and then go across the entrance and exit to the parking lot. So, I mean, I know why we're doing that. Is there a way that we can mark that? I think about when we looked at the Rubino's and we did the, when we did the striping for that parking lot, we striped a pedestrian accessway from the sidewalk to the building. And when I was thinking about that, I thought that that would be a lot of stripes everywhere, and it might be confusing to drivers. So I, one suggestion or idea that I had was where it says, this is hard to explain, so follow closely, where it says "walkway" on the south side of the drawing, and you see the stripes coming out there. If we were to continue that line across the parking lot to connect to the area where the handicapped striping is, right? And then sort of blocked out that area and painted it a solid color? What is, what do you guys think about that?
I think that's a good solution to draw people's attention to the fact that they're going to be crossing in front of cars, and the cars will also, I'm sorry, and the cars will also know that.
It's sort of a shared space.
Yeah.
Yeah, or maybe, maybe even like you see, you know, in a typical crosswalk where you have lines that run parallel to the walking path, but then maybe horizontal lines at a wider frequency.
Something, yeah. I was just worried about having a lot of lines.
Yeah. Yep.
Again, I think it's a good idea, and I think any of these solutions would be an improvement over what we're showing. There is the sidewalk along here as well. And I'm not trying to say, oh, they should walk out on the sidewalk by any means. But, yeah, whatever, whatever we think would be the best, the least confusing to the drivers and pedestrians, we'd be more than happy to do.
Before we lie on that sidewalk, that sidewalk to me seemed small. Is that less than a standard sidewalk for the town?
It will, actually, it's a county sidewalk, so county right-of-way. It's been there for a long time, so whether or not it meets current ADA standard, I'm not sure.
Okay. It just seems small to me, or narrow, not small, but narrow.
I'm sorry if I've missed this. Are you planning on repaving the parking lot as part of this project?
At this point, no.
Okay.
There may be a little patching going on, but for the most part, it's.
Then, yes, I think, I think the, I think a solid line at the very least from one side to the other would be good. All one color would be better. Stamped concrete would be best, but if you're not.
That was the, that was.
But if you're not, but if you're not, and the thing was, and the thing with.
I was going to throw that out.
Right, but with, with Rubino's, they re- had repaved the entire parking lot, so at that point, you already have it dug up, you might as well do it. But if you're not repaving the whole thing, then no, I, I, I'm okay with that. But I think, I think lines would be, lines would be good. One, one solid block of sea breeze themed color would be, would be better.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, I'm open to other ideas here.
Sea breeze ne- neighborhood, not like, you know.
Okay.
No, no, that's, I'll, I'll capture it, I just tried it.
This is what I was kind of-
Put that on the notes.
I know, this is what I was kind of thinking in terms of what would be painted the solid color, so that it's really clear that this is, you're gonna, a driver needs to be aware of that there's gonna be pedestrians in that area. Um, it's sort of visually widens the sidewalk, um, and doesn't require you to do any real physical stuff to the parking lot.
So, all kidding aside, are there, I know there's standards for that area, are there things such as sea breeze colors, or?
Oh, no.
The, um, so the, the-
Nautical, I know there's a-
In general, the, that area is in, envisioned for, if you wanna do whimsical, nautical sort of types of things, that's the place in the comprehensive plan that we've identified, that it's suitable here. Um, there, the, the underlying zoning that is in place is sea business, so in, in that respect, there aren't any specific guidelines that govern, um, this, um, redevelopment, like there are in other districts.
Would this fall under us, or the zoning board is what I was trying to figure out?
For-
Touches on the parking a little bit with the striping.
Well, no, the, I mean, the number of parking, that's a zoning board, uh-
This part falls under-
Decision, the, to the extent of what, how the site looks, and, um, that's something that this board can address as far as identifying or delineating pedestrian areas or walkways or, um, other site-related improvements.
And I'm sorry, you called that the sea breeze, what, whimsical?
Well, in the, in the comprehensive plan, in the, the neighborhood commercial areas, the comprehensive plan outlined, I, uh, preferences or, um, recommendations, um, some design guideline types of things. And for this particular area, they noted that this is a sort of an eclectic mix of businesses, has a nautical theme to it because of the waterfront, and so whimsical, sort of, those, um, kinds of nautical touches would be appropriate in this area.
Okay. Anything, I just wanted to get clarity.
Yeah, I think we do have a couple other things. Um, the fencing along the south side of the property?
Yes.
Can you remind me again what we're doing there?
There's a, a little elevation down at the bottom of your drawing. Essentially, this is just along the area behind, or wrapping around two sides of the seating area down there. Uh, and it's-
Is it gonna run along the property line?
Uh, it's inside the property line by a fair bit. It's about, uh, it depends where, 'cause it varies, it's, it's in the area of, uh, two and a half to three and a half feet.
Is that running all the way to the back of your current par-?
No, it just goes-
That will be open access?
Well, there's a building in the way there. It goes from the building up to the corner, which would be right about here.
All right. I guess I'm not recalling if that building actually closes the, uh, the property off. I know that the fence is in disrepair, if I had west on that line.
Yeah, back in here?
Yeah, it's not on your property necessarily, but the next property over would be in disrepair.
But the, the building is, uh, five and a half feet from the property line. This, the, the, I guess it was going to be a, an ice cream shop, I'm not sure it ever made it to that point. Uh, it's five and a half feet from the property line here, and about four and a half feet it, as you, as you go further west. And our fence is coming along, again, about three feet from the property line, and then angling up to it. The, the, uh, purpose of the fence is to delineate the eating space that's in there and to meet the requirements of, of the New York State-
The SLA, right, okay. And I, I think we wanna, I wanna go back to the lighting stuff, just, I, there's not a whole lot of detail on these lights. And, um, I, we were just having a conversation between the two of us, um, committee member, Reed and myself. Is there any problem with putting a light on the back of the kitchen and having it face that way onto there as opposed to the floodlight going out?
Our, our only concern with that is to, we, we really don't want to illuminate the neighbor, neighbor's yard. And as I'm, if I'm shooting to the west, if I, if I'm understanding you correctly, then I tend to illuminate his- I, I feel sorry for this guy, 'cause he's got, he can probably read-
You're removing that fence?
No, along, along this edge here, we were not gonna remove the fence, again, because as cars come in and out of here, we're using the fence to block the-
So, that light should-
Yeah, and my, my thought was, you know, a full cutoff LED wall pack? I mean, those things, you can almost with like a, a hard line decide where you want that light to end in a lot of those.
And that's, it, we can certainly do that, we just thought pointing back this way gave us more control, is all.
I just see as you're driving in to the, the, the parking lot, you're almost gonna have that light like blasting you right in the eye.
Was why we had it up a little higher. I mean, I have no problem with going the other way, I, I'm just concerned, I was out here at night looking at the lighting, and I, I swear that, that, uh, this poor guy here, if he had his, his curtains open, could probably read at night without having, you know, any lights on his bedrooms. Just because there's a lot of, there's a whole lot of light in that area. Uh, and, I mean, this was all done before, you know, dark skies, standards, et cetera.
Right, yeah.
And there's a lot of parking lots and a lot of lights around there, so we were just trying not to add to it. But yeah, I, I have no problem with, with going that way, we were just trying to, to, you know, as responsive as we could.
More stable against that building than it will be on a pole.
Certainly would.
So, Mr. Reed, Mr. Richards, I'm sorry, you want the light there in place of another one, or in addition to?
Yeah, I mean-
Yeah, swap out the pole light and put it on the back.
The pole light with the two-headed floodlight on it?
There's two pole lights though, there's a new, oh, not the Walmart mounted light farther down, we were just talking about that.
Right. The new post-mounted light?
I, I believe they're talking about this-
The new post-mounted?
This light here.
Yeah.
Once again, I have to point at things.
Works better.
I think you're gonna get more control over it.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay, I, I, again, I have, I have no problem with that idea. Be happy to, to change that. And, and the other lights in here are meant to be very low wattage, small lights. I can show you a, a cut that, that we had shown to the owner, uh, if that helps any-
Please, yeah.
To share them.
That would definitely help, I think.
They only brought so many.
That's fine.
Make sure you get one.
Right.
You guys are all get to share, I'm sorry. It's kind of a late thing. It doesn't have to be exactly like, all it is, is it's a, it's a wall-mounted sconce with a, I think, a fourteen watt, uh, LED in it, or eighteen watt LED.
Sixteen, yeah.
Sixteen.
You split the difference, close.
Seventeen point three.
There you go, there you go.
And, uh, depends if it's cold or not, right? Uh, so it's, it's, that's, that's the equivalent of around a hundred watts of incandescent, it's not a, not a tremendously powerful light. Uh, it's just, and it's, it's relatively low, it's just trying to give you a little general lighting in those areas. And again, only for that last hour or so of, of, uh, while they're still open in the summer, because in the winter, they, nobody's gonna be eating out there, and, uh, we're hoping it's nice and bright in the summer out there.
Are you gonna put any of those heaters, you know, that people?
Not intending at this point, no.
And then the outdoor lighting can be adjusted so it's off during the, uh-
Oh, yeah.
All right. How wide are the parking spaces?
Uh, I believe they're nine feet.
Okay.
Yep.
They're all nine feet, I see the ones marked, and I just see some lines that I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, it's-
Any other questions?
I know that you're losing seating in the front, right, because of the planters, right?
Yep.
If the planters were further out in, say, the space between the sidewalk and where the concrete pad starts, and they were heavier duty planters, that could be used in place of the bollards, would you then be able to recoup your seating in the front? Is that, that, that seems like it might be something that you would prefer.
Well, actually, the owner was not really crazy about having the seating right there.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, and I, we went back and forth on that discussion, he thought, you know, on one hand, it's the most, it's the most convenient seating, but the idea that you have to walk through it to go in and out of the, of, uh, the restaurant all the time? Um, so his original feeling was not to have the, the seating there, so he was, he had no problem at all with, uh, with, with putting, um, uh, planters out there or putting the, the-
Okay.
Whimsical out there, but, uh-
And I appreciate that. Yeah, I think that we talked, that was one of our suggestions at workshop, was the planters.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, with that, I'm gonna, um, you can have a seat, stay close by. That I'd like to, or any other staff questions before I open the public hearing? That I'd like to open up the public hearing, anybody who'd like to come address the board? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. See none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. With that, is there any discussion amongst the board members? I captured quite a few changes, if you'd like me to read them off, to see if these are still ones that we want on there or not? So, oh, I do have a question, I'm sorry, can I ask a question now? I forgot to ask it. You said you're gonna dress up the building, but I didn't hear any details of what that meant.
Of, I'm not sure, oh, there we go. Uh, dressing up the building at this time, well, first off, there's the addition, which is, you know, uh, sorry.
If you're not gonna need to point anything, you feel free to go back to the podium, make some of the viewing audience a little bit easier to capture the moment.
Then I can't point, anyways. Uh, dressing up the building at this, this point is we're, we're replacing a number of the windows, which are, are, uh, uh, in bad shape. Uh, they'll be painting it, uh, some of the trim work needs to be redone, we got new signage coming in, which we'll have to come in and, and show to folks in putting the addition on. Uh, so at this point, that's, that's the extent of where they're, they're going with dressing it up. Uh, we have some ideas that we'd really like to incorporate, which would be such as opening up, there are some light, some windows in that upper portion, it kind of has a, a, uh, secondary raised area, uh, and we'd, in the future, we'd like to do that, uh, but right now, he's trying to get open this summer, and so there, he's, he's limiting, limit, limiting what he does in order to try to, you know, make sure he can do a good job rather than, you know, do more good things badly.
And I apologize, did you tell us anything about signage? I didn't call-
Oh, signage is going to be on the building at this point, and no, I didn't tell you anything specifically about signage. Uh, we haven't gotten to that, uh, that point yet, and I'm sure that signage will come in, and it'll, it'll, whether it goes through the, the staff or through the board, that's, uh, you know, up to you guys. But at this point, it's intended to be signage that would just be on the building, similar in, in size and, and location to what's on the building now.
Okay. With that new information, is there any questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, I didn't ask them before. Okay, please have another seat. I'm gonna read through what I captured, and you guys can tell me. So I have, um, replaced the, uh, the new post-mounted light with a LED light on the rear of the new addition.
Yeah, can we say full cutoff?
Full, I'm sorry?
Full cutoff.
Wall pack?
Yeah.
Okay. I captured stabilized the northeast corner wall, I don't know if that's a condition or finding or condition.
Something's gonna have to be done with it.
How would I record that correctly?
I, I think they need to do it regardless of whether the board dictates that or not, in terms of just from a construction standpoint.
I didn't see anything on the plan, so that's why.
It's something, I mean, you can certainly indicate that as a, I believe it would not be a condition, but you can identify it as a, well-
I think that the back, um, the fence on the west side has to be stable in the same condition that it currently is. If that's by doing another wall to it, or if they have to do reinforcement on the other side, I mean, I don't care how it's done, I'm not an engineer.
So, I, the attorney-
Does that make sense?
Requested co-compliance on that wall?
I was just gonna say that, um, code, as a, as a ma- matter of the certificate, certificate of occupancy, it wouldn't be issued until all required repairs and, and corrections have been made.
Okay. I have removed the snow storage in front of the door that leads to the new addition. I have, I'm sorry, in front of the rear kitchen, south-facing door, removed the snow storage facing Culver Road.
If, if we remove the snow storage completely in front of the kitchen door, they really don't have anywhere to put snow storage at all.
That's why he asked where we were putting it.
I mean, I think it needs to comply with fire marshal and exiting, you know, building code requirements.
He said he was gonna put it on the new walkway, down on the left of this, so I don't know if I can call that out. He's gonna put snow storage here, and he's gonna put snow storage over in the area that's marked on the east side of the property.
There's some, there's some snow storage also over, um, over by the patio.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I see it, it's, it's all very limited though, in all the locations, and that's a decent-sized parking lot. I mean, that's, that's their issue to work out with the fire marshal and themselves as far as getting in and out of their door.
Yeah, and to the extent that, um, snow storage, if it were to be packed up against the building and the pro- and, you know, near to a door, um, as long as it didn't impede, you know, egress, ingress or egress through the door, that would be something that fire marshal would certainly flag, and, um, and we'd communicate with the owner of the property regarding that.
The only thing I'm thinking about is, we're making it now an enforcement issue, all we've done is say, it's okay here, you just go enforce it if it turns bad. I think we should have a solution to begin with.
If you look at the floor plan of where that kitchen door is, I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't know, uh, if, if we just tra- move the door from facing south to facing, um-
West.
West, I don't know if that's a, if there was any thought behind the placement.
Then you're opening the door into a driveline, yeah.
Okay, never mind.
I just, I don't like making things an enforcement issue when we have a chance to fix it right now. I mean, that, all we're doing is kicking it to somebody else, right? We realize that this could be a potential problem, we're saying, oh, you know what, he'll be good enough that if the fire marshal sees it, he'll go enforce it. Well, I think that if we just decide that there's a better place for snow at this moment-
Yeah, but I don't, where's that place?
Yeah, what's the better spot?
Where's the better place?
It's a constrained pre-existing site that's operated as a restaurant for-
Right.
Uh, maybe seventy year, I don't know how many years.
I don't, I don't see this any different than, you know, any building that has a door that opens into a parking lot, in that-
What's the matter with snowing sto- storing the snow to the west of this door against that fence location? They're not gonna use that the entire time.
They already have that marked.
It's rote, yeah, there's not much there.
Yeah. Well, there's as much there as there is in front of that door.
Yeah, it's marked, it's marked right here.
It's marked.
Lawn areas, no storage.
Yeah.
Does the door, can the door be on the north side of the, of the new extension?
It's on the lot line of the street.
Yeah, it's not convenient.
Yeah.
Deliveries and, I, I don't know, I mean, I'll go with whatever the board thinks, I just, I think it's more of an enforcement.
I've, I've been there, the doors are actually, the exit, there's an exit door on the west side of the building currently.
Or, how necessary is the existing raised deck patio area? We're making an awful, we don't have enough room in this parking lot for the snow storage and the required number of parking spaces and, and the other things. Um, if this patio area was removed, it would open up maybe an additional parking spot and maybe snow storage.
If, um, if, if, if business in the winter is such that they're gonna use the patio, I mean, could that be a multi-use patio? They're not gonna sit out there in the winter, in the middle of the winter, and have, uh, hot chocolate.
Right.
Uh, so if there are a way to, to snow the, to store the snow there and not have it open for seating.
Wait, are you talking about the patio here?
Yeah.
The new construction patio, right?
No, the new construction, they're gonna have-
No, that's, that's-
They're gonna have, um, they can't-
No, he's talking about the existing.
He's talking about the existing, on the-
I'm talking about the deck.
Yeah, but that, that's a raised deck, Mike. That's about two and a half, three feet off the ground.
'Cause there is plenty of space for outdoor seating, I mean, we're adding a new outdoor seating area over here. Is it, is it necessary to have both, especially when we're struggling with finding enough parking spaces and snow storage?
Listen, I don't know if, I don't know if not putting snow in front of that door there and, and finding him a new spot is worth taking away that patio on them. You, you know, I, I, per- personally, if, if they believe that the snow, if you can put, if you have enough room for snow on that, that little lawn area, and also in front of that door in a way that-
on that, that little lawn area and also in front of that door in a way that doesn't block that door shut, I can be, I can be okay with that. I don't think we need to remove-
But how do you contain that snow is my problem here.
You shovel it. I mean, you, you deal with it just like you deal with in any other parking scenario.
I understand that, but I'm also, when I do it at my house, it's one thing because I don't have fifty, sixty cars a day going through there. I'm gonna have people hitting that. It's going to be splashing over, it's gonna go into this drive lane. I just, is there a way for the ZVA to grant them a variance for two spaces and let them use one of them for snow storage?
That's something that the applicant would have to bring to the zoning board?
If we made it a requirement?
Yeah, I don't know that you can require something of the zoning board.
No.
Oh, for the snow storage?
Yeah.
For-
So I guess we could require a snow management plan that he'd have to present?
I mean, you gotta do something with the snow, it just, unfortunately-
May I, may I ask the board if they would consider that the owner and manage the snow as designed and truck off-site if needed? If they can't manage with the existing snow storage? Which I think this board has done in previous, um, applications?
I, I'm in, I'm in favor of that. And something else just dawned on me here. The center drive lane is marked at plus or minus twenty-five feet, ten inches. Twenty-four foot is required and is this, is really a typical two-way traffic, you know, drive lane. What if they had approximately that one foot, ten inches all along the proposed seating area on the south? You know, kind of at, at the toe of the parking spaces or the head of the parking spaces? Where they could essentially push a two-foot drift for that entire width? And they'd still maintain the parking stall and their drive lane?
I would-
I would be happy with that.
Yeah, I would be a lot happier with that.
Does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah.
Say it again, please.
So, so what I'm saying is, this whole property line down here, or not property line, this whole edge of, of parking down here on the lower side in between the parking, the former ice cream building and the patio seating area? They could really have a two-foot snowbank pushed right up in that area? And they would still have the required parking here, drive lane here, and parking here? And they could have two feet times the length of that parking area?
And you're taking the two feet from the drive aisle?
Correct, which, which still meets the, the minimum requirements of drive, drive aisles.
And you would still have all the, um, the landscaping? Because it's gonna kinda kill that, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it, it would be, it would be in the asphalt area, you know, up to the landscaping. So you, yeah, you're gonna be pushing snow into this, you know, up against these junipers that are called out here. It's gonna become a landscaping maintenance issue. I think it's a better solution than-
And it's a heck of a lot cheaper than trucking the snow out. Because they'll do that once and that'll be the end of that, because they'll get the bill from the company and never do it again. I mean, I, I'm not convinced that, I think we just took a class on that.
Okay, so you took a class on this. Do you still want the snow storage removed from the spots we talked about?
Well, I think along Culver, yes. I think the applicant was fine with that.
That's, that was a drafting mistake is what-
Yeah, I think the applicant's fine with that.
And the snow storage in front of the rear kitchen, south-facing door?
If, if everybody else is in agreeance with the, the snow storage that I just mentioned, I guess I'm okay with taking it off in the other spot.
Okay. And then, I wanna capture what you just said correctly. So say it again.
Alright, so, um, the most southern edge of the parking spots could have approximately a two-foot snow storage area and still meet code. Does that make sense?
So what I have is south, south edge parking spaces, they have two feet of, I'm sorry, what'd you call it?
Snow storage.
Snow storage.
And just to make that, um, clear, what you might wanna indicate is that the parking spaces along the southern, on the south side of the lot-
Maintain eighteen feet.
Or should be, they should be striped to be nine by twenty. And then you would have the two-foot give and then still have a complying, um, parking space that's leftover.
I like that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it. The other things, I'm sorry, anything more on the snow storage? The next thing, oh, uh, it's not depicted here and I don't know if it's important, but on the northeast where the existing raised deck patio area, you said you were gonna put a railing, but I don't, I don't show it on, I don't see it on the map. Is that something you want called out?
Sure. I, I think it's code anyway that, yeah, railing to match existing.
And then I said arrows will be provided in the parking lot for traffic flow. Then I have, uh, west side Culver Road striping. It would be a striping solid color or stamped concrete. I said or, just wanna specify that. In concert with the electric nautical sea breeze color and design guidelines.
I, I am in, uh, full agreement with that.
Those are the ones I caught. Was there any other ones that I missed?
I just, this isn't one that I brought up. I'd like just, uh, on do not enter or one-way sign placed on the line.
They've got one. There's one called out. It says exit only sign.
Okay, great. Then we're good.
Okay. This is Seeker, and could you, Carrie, please review this very simple Seeker part two?
I sure can. So the action before you is the, um, approval of site plan associated with the, um, addition to the existing building, demolition of another separate existing building on site and related site amenity or related site improvements. It's an unlisted action for the purposes of Seeker. This is an existing site that's been a restaurant or an other occupant, other occupied commercial businesses for many years. The biz, the built, the existing building's being expanded to allow for a larger kitchen. The existing vacant structure adjacent to the restaurant parcel, or restaurant, is being demolished to create outdoor seating area. It's a previously disturbed site. There are no significant impacts related to the proposed physical changes on the site. The addition is in character in both design and size with the existing buildings in the surrounding neighborhood. The addition isn't going to generate any increases to seating capacity or potential, which could drive potential traffic impacts. It's very, it's consistent with what's always been here, so there aren't any large changes expected. The, because there are no large or moderate impacts associated with this action, we're recommending a negative declaration.
Thank you. I just wanna confirm the applicant to get the letter from the Monroe County Planning and Development. Okay. With that, do I have a motion for Seeker?
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and make a motion that the board, based on the information provided through the applicant and staff, classify this as an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay, and no abstains. And, uh, I'm gonna have Ms. Murray instead of Ms. Hollenbeck. Would somebody like to make a motion?
You.
Okay. So, in regards to case number PB 1804-4, upon the manner of request by Vanity Associates, acting as agent for Giuseppe's Restaurant and Pizzeria for, this would be final, site plan approval to construct a plus or minus hundred and fifty square foot addition and to complete site-related improvements to operate a restaurant on premises forty-six zero five and forty-six fifteen Culver Road in a C business district. There's the following conditions. One, the south edge parking spaces will have a two-foot snow storage buffer and the parking spaces should be nine by twenty in size. Number two, the, we will replace the new post-mounted lights with an LED light that is full cutoff. I forgot the other, wall pack? Wall pack on the rear of the new addition. Any addition there? Three, they'll ensure that the, the wall on the northeast corner wall will be code compliant and repaired. Is that a finding, I guess? Condition. Remove the snow storage in front of the rear kitchen, south-facing door, and remove the snow storage facing Culver Road. The northeast, I'm sorry, on the existing raised deck patio area, the northeast-facing deck railing will be replaced to match the existing. In and out arrows will be on the parking lot for traffic flow. Or, actually, arrows will be in the parking lot for track, traffic flow. And the west side Culver Road striping solid color or standard concrete will be in concert with the electrical, nautical sea breeze color design guidelines.
Stamped concrete, right?
What did I say?
It was stamped. And just so you know, there, there aren't, I'd be cautious about the, the word design guidelines because there aren't adopted guidelines for this area. It's more of the recommendations, um, in the comp plan.
Concert with the electrical, nautical sea breeze color.
You can just, or you could just say the design preferences in the comp plan? I don't know if that's, or if that's-
I'm not exactly sure what we're getting at with it, though. What?
Just whatever Mike wants here, so.
Like, the, the master plan calls out, uh, uh, calls out sea breeze and doesn't, you know, talks about whimsical design choices, but I'm not familiar with a list of colors or anything like that.
That's why I'm asking.
There are, and so I, I'm not sure-
That was my original question.
Yeah.
I'm not sure that we wanna, I would maybe wanna strike that last portion related to the, the specific design. You can just say solid paint or stamped concrete.
So the west side Culver Road will either have striping, solid color, or stained, stamped concrete?
That's stamped, we, we deleted that.
No, or, give them the option.
We give them the option.
So, can you reread that for us?
West Side Culver Road will have striping, solid color, or stamped concrete.
West Side Culver Road what, though? West Side Culver Road, uh-
Walkway.
Walkway, thank you.
On premise.
I, I don't know, I find this really hard to describe. I can show you on a, on a piece of paper what I'm talking about, but to write down what we're trying to say is, is hard, that's, that's all.
Why don't you say on premise walkway that connects the handicap, um, zone to the-
Handicap area to the seating area.
Seating area.
On premise walkway to connect, I'm sorry? On premise?
On premise, walkway to connect.
The handicap-
Handicap-
Loading area.
Loading area.
To the outdoor seating area.
There we go. Couldn't have said it better myself.
I'm still not confident with the way that we said it, but okay.
I think it's a little clearer what we're trying to do.
A little. But, but, but do you want it as striped, solid, or stamped?
I think that it, I think that it should be a solid paint color if we're not gonna get, um, stamped concrete, which is not gonna happen. But I, the reason that I deflect from the striping is because there's gonna be striping for no parking, striping for handicap, I think that, and if I was a driver and was gonna pull into that parking lot and I saw striping across the, the, the mouth of the parking lot, I would be confused. But if it was a solid color, I would, I, I think that it would be less confusing to me. But also, it communicate to a pedestrian that this is an okay place to walk.
So say solid color or stamped concrete.
That's what I have. Are we violating, are we putting too much of restrictions there and for some reason they can't do it that way?
Uh, no, not to my knowledge. And if there were some issue, they could either come back and we could review it with staff and, and/or they'd have to come back to the board.
Okay. So based on that, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone abstain?
I wasn't here for the whole meeting, so I didn't hear just a gay, no, this presentation.
It's okay. So that passes with six ayes, one abstention, no nays, no abstains. Thank you. Thank you for doing business around the court. Oh, sorry.
Got some minutes, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Alright.
Yep, the meeting's still going on, guys.
Thanks for coming.
So, um, I'm looking at minutes from March twenty-sixth.
How about February twenty-sixth?
February.
February twenty-sixth, twenty, twenty eighteen. This is the first set I have.
February twenty-sixth. Has anybody had a chance to review these?
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Anybody would like to make a motion?
I actually had a few corrections.
Okay.
Um, bullet point number one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, under the first, um, entry on, uh, it's Anne's comments. It says, "Asking to re-review the plans so that they protect the existing," should it be residents, plural? And also, on the second page, uh, fourth bullet po, uh, third bullet point, "Would like to see my own mother move from Syracuse to the proposed I-square, square should be, yeah, should be capitalized."
Good catch.
But that's all that I had.
So do I have a motion with those corrections?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll move to, uh, to approve them.
I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Minutes dated March twelfth, two thousand and eighteen. Anybody have any corrections to these? Need any time to review them?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Was that sponsor?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry.
On Monday, March twenty-sixth, there already is one correction.
You need a, you need to close out that motion first, though.
I think, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstains? Okay, thank you. For Monday, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen, there's already corrections of crossed out Mary Hollenbeck and Mr. Palermo. And then it has our alternative Jackie Murray in attendance. Have everybody read these, reviewed?
Yes, sir.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
As amended?
That's your second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Not opposed, no abstains? That passes. With that, do we have a motion? Oh, anymore?
I believe Michael Palermo, you would abstain because you were absent, correct? I, I'm sorry, I missed that.
You don't have to, though, right? If I remember the new rules? Did anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I second that? Thank you.